Coming. All right, we want to welcome everybody here today and it is 5:30. We're meeting at the, in the boardroom on Legacy Campus. And we'll go ahead and get started with our roll call.
Larry Jepson, Board Member.
Randall Bagley, Board Member.
Steve Norton, Superintendent.
Roger Pulsifer, Board Member.
Kathy Chris-Janson, Board Member.
Chris Corcoran, Board Member.
Jeff Nielsen, Board Member.
Terry Rhodes, Board Member.
Dale Hanson, Business Administrator.
All right, thank you. And tonight Terry Rhodes will give our pledge and our mission statement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you. All right, we have some recognitions tonight that we would like to recognize. And we feel bad that the teachers cannot be here to be recognized in person, but we are still really excited for our recipients. We have Krista Bell, who's an English teacher at Skyview, Dee Downs, who is the PE teacher at Spring Creek. I taught him in sixth grade. And either Nina or Nina Copeland, fourth grade teacher in Greenville, and Allison Erickson, a first grade teacher in Cedar Ridge. And we appreciate them so much. Our teachers have really gone the extra mile this year and it's great to be able to recognize these outstanding people.
Just a side note, if you're ever in the district office, we now have the Teachers of the Year down by the classrooms. And Blake Pulsifer did a very nice job of putting them on the wall in a nice frame. And so I'd like to thank him publicly. And it's just a nice place for teachers to be able to be recognized or on the wall and then have other people be able to recognize them by seeing them.
Awesome, thanks for doing that. Appreciate them being moved. Okay, I doubt there's any public input. Okay, then we'll move down to our consent agenda and I will take a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, any discussion questions on it? All right, we'll go ahead and vote.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, all right. Next on our agenda, on the action agenda is a request for approval of the 2021-2022 school calendar. I'll take a motion to approve that.
I move that we approve the 2021-2022 school calendar.
I second.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Do you have anything you want to say about Jeff?
Oh, Mike did a good job.
Yeah, I thought it was great.
Good collaboration.
Anything you want to say, Mike?
I want to make sure that we realize we just approved.
Well, we haven't approved it quite yet.
I had everything ready to go on the computer, then it did an update. Now it's, I'm trying to get back into Board Docs again. There's a lot that I attached to the agenda there that allows the school board, the local school board can approve out of the 180 days. The local board can approve up to six days out of the 180 days for teacher professional development or teacher prep or different things like that. And we have never done that as a district. Maybe it's just four days that the board can approve. And we have never done that as a district. And this provision came in in about 2009 when Career Ladder was lost and all that took place. But like I say, our district has never done it. This year, the school calendar, when we met, they really missed the idea of having a day in between trimesters. And we did it this year. We were able to make it work into the calendar because of the flexibility that we have, everything going on. And we received a tremendous amount of positive feedback from administrators and teachers that, is there any way we can put that, get that back into the calendar? So there's two ways you can do it. One day, one way is you just add two more days to the calendar. And it's not a school day. Teachers aren't paid, but it's a day provided in between the trimesters and teachers can show up, you know, to get themselves ready for the new trimester and submit grades and do all of that. But like I say, it's not a paid day. And we've done that before in the past. And that forced, that also forces elementary to follow along with that same model. What we did this year is we were providing two grading days, but it's part of the 180 days. So therefore, it is a paid day. The teachers are on contract. And if they happen to not be there that day, they have to claim a day or whatever happens on that. And it was very successful when we did it in November. And it'll happen again in January. But this calendar is showing that the board is actually approving for our district to use two of those days of the 180 instructional days to use for, to plug in for like a trimester transition day. And then Gary can tell you, I mean, the elementary, they really liked what they were able to do with those two days as well. So that's what you're actually approving here tonight, is using two of those 180 days. Okay, so we'll have 178 instructional days.
Does that affect anything statewide as a requirement for those students having a certain amount of days or?
No, it still meets the requirement, you know, because you can count that as far as the 180 days if the local board approves it.
I'm not sure, but we might be the only school district that's counted at 180.
Oh, really?
So, but it's not a bad thing that we've done that. It just gave us the opportunity to have more instructional days. But I really think that it's not a bad idea to, at this point, try and work this in. We'll see if it works okay and come back to you and report on it next year.
All right, anybody have any thoughts?
So this isn't on this calendar, but are we? I know some of the districts have decided that there will be no more snow days during their calendar, that they'll just switch to online.
And we, and you can see our spring break on the calendar. It says if needed, snow days. But I think before we would dip into that, we would move to online instruction. You know? You know, that would be.
There's a superintendent right out there in the nation right now that's being held up as a hero. And in my mind, I like the guy. He sent out a letter, Jefferson County Schools. And I'm thinking it's back in Virginia. He called a snow day and he said, we aren't going to make it up and you kids just go out and play in the snow and have fun. So he's getting a lot more favorable press than the gentleman from Jordan School District who says, we'll never have another one again because we'll just put you online. So there's that, those two sides. We, we have, the calendar's still built. We could automatically easily go to online. But I would just soon not make a public statement one way or the other because I think there's some value in just waiting to see what kind of day we really have. You have to have in the hands of every kid, the technology. And to do that on just a day when nothing, it's a little more difficult than you think. And it might not hurt just to have a day when the kids can go out and teachers can pull the covers up. And so I'd like to leave it as is right now.
And we did it last year on a bad weather day. And we just did a late start and it worked. We were ready to go and it worked.
Any other questions or thoughts on this?
Yeah, if the four days included in the 180 that could have been used for professional development have been available since 2009, why? I'm just curious, why our district hasn't taken advantage of those?
It's because we, our teachers would rather have the 180 instructional days. Because if we, even taking these two, we're taking two instructional days away. And the teachers agreed this year saying if that's what it takes for us to be able to do this mid, you know, trimester transition day or whatever. And the elementary, they did a couple of other things with them. They really liked it. That's what they're saying is they don't want to lose four instructional days going to 176. You know, that's what it all comes down to, is the amount of instructional days.
Kind of been a culture of that we like having the kids and I'd like to have them in instructional time. We'd like to give back. There's never been a teacher who hasn't wanted to give back those nine Career Ladder days. And if we can work back into the situation. That was the one thing that when I came to Utah from Idaho, that was something that Utah was doing right. And that's the first thing they cut when things got tight.
But then that lengthens your schedule, right? So you either start earlier and later too. Okay, any other concerns, questions? All right, we'll go ahead and vote then.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, thanks. All right, we'll go down to our reports agenda. And the first one is the Skyview and Smithfield Community Recreation Center Joint Use Agreement Revision. And I think this just barely got put on today with all of the revisions in it. So you may not have had time to read it. But Dale, do you want to go first and explain anything about this?
Yeah, there was a couple of items that, well, I should just say the joint use agreement that we have with Smithfield City has been in place now for about 25 years. And it's worked very well. But there was, there was an issue at the school having to do with the Rock Hour, that prep with remediation hour, I guess, for students, where the public would like to use the rec center as much as they can. And so they wanted to have public use of the weight room during that rock period. There were some issues about whether sometimes the public would hold, would stay working out past the time when the period would end. And then when the students came in, they'd run into problems there and different things. So there was some adjustments put into language there that would allow the public to come in during the rock period. But the city would have to provide supervision in the weight room during that period to make sure that patrons leave before the students show up. And I think everyone felt comfortable that that was going to work well. And then the only other changes we had in there were just small cosmetic items, mostly having to do with the budget, with timing and on different things that the agreement had some timelines in there that maybe was a little bit different than we've actually been following that has worked better for us. And so as far as how often we meet, which has been being reduced quite a bit lately just because things have gone so well, has kind of minimized the need for some of the reporting and that that was in the policy or the use agreement. And so we just kind of made some small adjustments that way. But any changes to the use agreement needs to come back and be approved by both the Smithfield City Council and the cash school board. And so, but those are really, I think, the only changes. If you remember any others, there's some grammatical changes I think you fixed.
Well, didn't they add the appendix at the end? Appendix one and appendix two?
Yeah, there's two appendix back there that were part of it, that were not part of the original use agreement. They just made that part of it, so they're all together.
But this is the first time in 25 years, whatever, that they've made any changes to it? And I think they did mention too that also the coaches needed to be informed as to what their schedule is so they don't intrude upon the community time as well with their athletes. So anyway, both Dale and I attend those meetings and it's a great committee. There's citizens on it and people from the Smithfield Council. And everyone is very cooperative and wants it to work, and it has.
Yeah, what a great use of resources. The Smithfield City put some money in, we put some money in. We've both got more facility than we would have had on our own. And yeah, when you spell out a good agreement and live by it, I think it benefits everybody.
So you might want to look over that before our next meeting and see if there's anything on there that you find concern about. Anybody have a question? Sorry that we were slow getting that on the agenda, but it just happened that way. Okay, we'll move down to number two, Board Policy Updates. And Mike, you're up again.
A couple of months ago, Tim gave me a few policies. I think they had a meeting with some of them and said, we need to update a few policies. Well, there's three of them here that we're going to take a look at. And the first one here is voluntary use of vehicles. And so what we're proposing, this particular policy, is that we retire this policy and we're going to combine it with the, in Section 9000 under the Students Activities Excursion Policy. And I had Wayne write this up. And if we go to this policy, this is where we added it right here, Section 2, that I've highlighted in yellow. So we took that policy and Wayne shortened it up and this is the way he would like it placed in that policy. So that's our recommendation for that particular one. The next one, are there any questions on that one?
You just need an R in driver on 2A.
On 2A?
Mm-hmm. The volunteer driver.
I'm going to tell Wayne he can't spell driver then. But I should have looked over it. Okay, I'll look at it here. All right, the next one is under instruction. And it's dealing with credit, secondary school credit. And the recommendation is to retire this policy, period. We have another whole section under Students that talks about secondary school credit. And it was just, this is a paragraph that's a duplicate. So our recommendation is we totally retire this policy.
Besides that, this policy talks about quarters of classwork, which haven't existed for years.
Yeah, so we'll retire that one. You know, so it's a good one to take a look at and update. The next one was the out-of-state fees. This particular what policy right here. And the recommendation on this one is to retire this particular policy and combine it into the 9,000 student fees, fee waiver and fundraiser. And that is actually embedded in two places in this policy. We add it right here under I as far as the definition. And then we actually add the statement in Section 15, out-of-state fees. And so that's what we've, our recommendation is on this one. Is just retire it and relocate it into this current policy. Any questions on the changes at all?
I'm just curious on the volunteer drivers.
Yeah.
You know, teachers are never really allowed to drive students anywhere, so.
Yeah, it's mainly pertaining to parents.
Okay.
Using their vehicles on it. And Wayne really tries to discourage that a lot. And the way you read his statement, he really tries to discourage it as well.
Okay, I was just wondering about that.
Yeah.
Any questions, anyone?
On Statement D, under out-of-state fees, it talks about the Uniform School Fund. And according to the legislature, they, we haven't been paid by the Uniform School Fund for almost a decade because they have bypassed that fund. Do we need to take that out of our language in our policy?
What should it say, Dale? I mean.
Well, this is a year that they guaranteed that that money would go back into that fund, so.
We'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
There's already talk of tweaking all of that.
Yeah, yeah. But that's the way, they did promise it would go back into that account where it couldn't be used or anything else. We'll see.
Well, I just wonder in our policy if we should not be so specific of where the money's coming from.
Yeah, we probably don't need to be that specific, yeah.
So what I'll do.
Can you go back to that one, Mike, so we can see it?
It's right here on the bottom. It's right here on D.
Yeah, letter D.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, D, right there. Okay, thanks.
So what I'll do is I'll get with Dale and we'll decide the right way to say that right there, to get that out. So it's a little more general in terms for that.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you and thanks for doing that.
Okay.
I appreciate that we're trying to get all the policies updated. Dale, Monthly Financial Report.
Just do this quickly. We, this report is for the period ending November 30th. And so it does all reflect, again, like all the carryovers that have all been moved forward into the finances since the audit was completed. We're still waiting for the mid-year revenue updates from the Utah State School Board's office. That, I expect that any day now. So it usually comes about the middle of December. So it should be about due to show up. But I know we have had a small increase in enrollment above what we had budgeted for this year. So there should be additional funding for us above our estimates that we built the budget on last spring. But, you know, things go well. As you look down through the report again, we try to focus mostly on salaries and benefits where that makes up about 86% of the general fund. And the one thing that has changed in there is on benefits. You'll notice in most cases now, we are having a greater percentage of budget expended at the end of November as we had the year before. And that's because of a change in our health and accident insurance premiums. Where we're self-insured, in past, we've actually not been charging premiums until the end of, the end of October, the October payroll. Just because there was so much getting things organized that HR wasn't able to get everything set up in time for the September payroll for that to happen. But with one of the changes we have with the new system we're in now is that we are able to begin assessing premiums starting in September. So now the year's premiums for employees is charged in each of the payrolls from September through June, so 10 payments. Where in the past, they were getting charged for nine payments going from October through June. And so clearly we have a greater percentage now of benefits for insurance being charged as of the end of November than we have in the past. But that works out better because now I don't have to loan the insurance fund money for near as long because now I finally, well, before I wasn't getting any premiums in the new year until the end of October, even though the coverage started the first of September. And so I was always having to make a loan out of our general fund over to the insurance fund to cover it for that period of time. This year we had to again, but not for near as long or as much. But so that is working better. I think we could look also down, if you look on the portion having to do with utilities. Again, the change we have with these three different loans that we've, I guess their lease is basically through Johnson Controls for these energy upgrades across the district, that we're covering the repayment of those, of those, of that work over a 25-year period payback. But the funds for that are coming from savings that we incur in our utilities because of the changes. And so having switched that part of the budget over from utilities over to the lease repayment, you can still see on the, it's on the second page there where it has operations and maintenance. Utilities, right now, we have spent 26.2% of our budget as of the end of November, where a year ago we had spent 31.7. So we're five and a half percent to the good on that budget. And I know we have had a mild fall. But so that number is adjusted completely with changes due to these lighting and that across the district. But it's partially part of that. And I think it shows positively that way. The very last page, I think it's interesting to look at, is note that part of the COVID-19 changes in the federal government is now allowing us to continue to receive federal compensation for meals that we provide to students. It's like back in last spring where we were actually delivering meals out to the kids in the valley. They weren't even checking to see if the kids we were giving it to was a three-year-old who's not even going to school or wherever. They may be homeschooled or anything like that. We just didn't have to worry about any of that. And they've actually extended that now this year so that children are not having to purchase school lunch tickets. The full meal cost is being reimbursed by the federal government. So if you look down in that last report, about three-fourths of the way down, it looks at the total meals served. This year we have 700, or we have 675,000 that we've served. And last year at that same time, we had 710. So the meals served are actually down a little bit. But if you look up above on the revenue section there, you look at sales to pupils. Last year we had over 1.2 million that we had collected as of the end of November from student sales. This year we have 424,000. A lot of that has to do with students buying à la carte items because they can't buy à la carte with their regular meal ticket as they would have.
But the federal allocation is up 600,000.
So we're down, we're down 800,000 in student sales. And down on federal allocation, you can see we're up about 600,000. So we are down a little bit from where we were last year. But still that, it's kind of an interesting change to see. We had a sizable increase in the carryover balance in school lunch. And a lot of it had to do with the federal reimbursement of those meals. They were reimbursing at a higher rate than what we were getting locally. And so just wanted to point that out, that it's kind of an anomaly that we're going through this year, but we're still fine with how that's operating. So like I say, we should have updated revenue figures for the next month's report, I hope. And but everything right now, we're still in a good position, I think, financially in all regards.
Okay, anyone have a question? Okay, thank you, Dale. Okay, next, there wasn't anyone who said they needed to do a committee report.
Maybe I'll give just a minute.
Okay.
We just finished high school athletics realignment. And we talked earlier about it today. Region four, we have 13 teams in region four now. The center, central region. Uh, the center, central region part of it, uh, Stansbury, Tooele and three or four others.
Park City.
Park City. They wanted to go to five A and because they didn't want to travel to Cache Valley or to St. George. And so I guess what they basically said is if we don't get what we want, we're going to go independent. And so today, uh, the board of trustees, we voted to go ahead and let them move up to five A. So there's thirty-three teams in five A and thirteen in four A. So. That was the biggest, uh. Discussion we had today. Uh. So that will be that way for the next two years.
All we gotta do is take on the South and we'll, we'll have a state championship.
Our chances are better.
Yeah, we're.
Um, does anybody else have a committee report that you wanna?
Did, did anyone have time to read my email about, um, the USBA?
I did.
That was excellent. Very comprehensive. I liked it.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
It was great.
Especially, uh, there's a lot of discussion at USBA, um. I'll say this tongue in cheek. When Tooele, when no one from Tooele is there, there's a lot of discussion. About Tooele requesting single district status, um. Because the, the reason they did was they increased by four thousand students this year from. With students from other school districts by, because of their online, um. Programs that they've adopted this year. But, um, other school districts here have tried that. Um, have after a few years given it up because it's not financially sustainable. So, um, anyway. Tooele feels like, um, they're treated like the ugly stepchild as a district with the other districts of the state. And so they're very proud of their new single district region status, just so you know. But, um. There are some, there are a lot of smaller districts who are concerned about the, um, imbalance. In, of representation on the USBA Board of Directors now. Because there are ten. Uh, there will now be ten single district regions and only seven multi-district regions. So. If anyone here cares about that.
Is that a legitimate concern or? Not so much.
Depends on who you are.
Oh.
Whether you care about it or not. Logan cares about it. Um, cause I had, uh, I had some questions from Ann Gary about that whole thing. Um, and there are some, some of the small districts across the center of the state, um, that feel like. Uh, they may be losing voice on the Board of Directors. Because there's one region, I can't remember what, which region it is, but they have nine school districts in their region, in their one region. So they're one person. Representing nine school districts on the Board of Directors. And so it, it's, it's an interesting dynamic. Um, Richard says, Richard Stoll says that. Um, Utah actually has more. People on their Board of Directors, State Board of Directors, um, Association. Than California. And, um, so there are some, and Richard didn't say this, he, he's very careful. Um, but there are some who feel like, uh, the USBA Board of Directors has too many people on it. So anyway, that'll be a topic of discussion at USBA for all of the next year.
All right, thank you. Um, I was gonna ask you to, even though you typed it out for us on an email, to just give us an update on the convention this year, kind of. What's going on with that?
Um, well, Coach Sutaki is the keynote speaker and McKay is very proud of that, as he should be. So it'll be fun to hear what, um, he has, what Coach Sutaki has to say about public education.
Is that the Friday night?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Friday night. And be there, you have to be on for the drawing, Dale.
I never win.
You're the only one who wins. That's what I'm telling you.
Just every year.
You have to be. Um, so you have to be in attendance to win, just like in our, in person. Um, and that, so that night will be the, I, I texted Richard or I emailed Richard this morning because if you look in your Dags. There is a program, um, booklet like usual, only it's like half the size or maybe a third of the size of normal. Um, and, and the first general session, so Friday night. In the heading says it goes from six to seven thirty and then the start time is listed at seven down in the details. So I. Did already email Richard about that and he said there will be a new email coming out to everyone, all the members to. Give more detail about what's happening, um, with the, with the annual conference information. So that's Friday night is an hour and a half and, or Thursday night is an hour and a half. And then Friday morning is three hours. Pick and choose which, um, breakout you want to attend. And it's just that simple. Uh, instead of trying to cram all the hours of the annual conference into a couple of days of. Online stuff, um, the Board of Directors felt like that's just too much. So, uh, we'll spread it out. Um, over the course of the whole year and give opportunities, um, either monthly or every other month. For, uh, another breakout session of professional development type stuff.
Okay. Anybody have questions about USBA? Okay, so, um, anybody else have a board committee report? All right, we'll move down to the board president minute, which is going to be a little longer than a minute. Um, first of all, uh, now kind of help me out with this. The NSBA, is it only going to be online? All right. So if we want, any, if anybody wants to attend, um, the registration has to be done before February nineteenth. And it is April eighth, ninth and tenth. Personally, I just think. That I'm gonna wait until it's in person to go to it. And I don't know if we have to pay a fee if we go online?
You do.
We do. So.
That's, it's really relatively expensive for an online.
Okay. I guess if anybody really wants to do it, then just let Carolyn know.
Yeah, they're more than welcome to.
You're welcome to do it. Um. So, any questions on that? Okay, um. And I'm not really sure yet if, uh, we will have the legislative school visits and luncheon on January fourteenth that starts at ten AM. But Logan is in charge of that and Carolyn kind of keeps us updated on it. And so just kind of watch and listen and I'll check it.
I, I got a, a notice the other day saying they didn't know for sure whether I was coming or not.
Okay.
So I think they must be planning on doing it.
Oh, okay.
That's, at least I, I, that would have been a strange email to get because she wanted to know if I was coming.
Yeah, I got the same one too.
So.
Okay. All right. So put that on your calendar then, January fourteenth, and we'll be looking for, um, more information as that comes. Okay, um, all right, then, um, the teacher appreciation message for January is for you, Chris. So you can get that agenda and she'll get it out to everyone.
What's the date?
Um, we've been trying to do it by about the fifteenth or sixteenth of the month. Okay, but I think anytime. Yeah, anytime you get it out is great. And then, um. So, um, there's a few changes made in the handbook and, um, also there is a part in the handbook. That has been added for the Teacher and Student Success, um, Act. Have you had a chance to go on and look at these forms? We don't really need to vote on it. But, um. Basically what has happened is, let me find my book. We took the old. Uh, vision statement out, let's see, and put the new one in. We took the, uh, board goals out. There were a few, um, little commas and things like that that had to be fixed. And then on the last page, uh, right under the. School Community Councils and School Land Trust Plans, there is a new section to be added to the school board and its role with teacher and student success act plans. So. I don't know if you want to just look at it and let me know if you have any problems with it. We don't need to vote on it. But, uh, Mike has looked at it and checked out with the, all of the proper documents that everything is accurate on it. Does anybody have any comments on it up to this point?
Um. Just a little bit of wordsmithing. The middle, uh, sentence. Of the first paragraph has a lot, has quite a few program words in it.
Oh, yeah.
So program is in there a lot. And I just wonder if we could use a different word.
Okay. How about if I just make some changes and then have Carolyn or else I will send it out, make sure it's okay? And then, um, we'll get those printed and out to you hopefully by the first meeting in January. So then the board handbook should be updated. Everybody good with that? Okay. And then, let's see. I think that is it. As far as I'm. Uh, as far as all of those administrative things go. Okay, so. This year we were not able to go to NSBA. We couldn't have our summer party. And we can't, couldn't have our Christmas party. And I just thought, well, we still have to have fun. We have to do something. So we're gonna play a game. I am just kidding. He has told me several times.
Yeah, I won't be invited to that party, I'm sure.
So today I'm gonna tell you a little bit about puzzles. And forgive me for, for, uh, reading this, but there's a lot of information here. Then I couldn't remember it all. A puzzle is a game, problem, or toy that tests a person's ingenuity or knowledge. In a puzzle, the solver is expected to put pieces together in a logical way. In order to arrive at the correct or fun solution of the puzzle. During twenty twenty, people all across the country have been pulling out their puzzles to pass the time. The very first jigsaw puzzle is said to have been made by London mapmaker John Spilsbury in the seventeen sixties. He pasted a map onto a thin piece of wood and he used a scroll saw to cut it up. England would be one piece, Germany would be another piece, and so on. He marketed these puzzles to the very affluent and influential people as a tool to teach their children geography. And probably just about every one of us put together a, a puzzle of the United States sometime in our lives. Soon puzzles expanded their reach beyond learning with puzzles depicting nursery rhymes and fairy tale subjects, ships and trains and many others. Early in the twentieth century, gaming company Parker Brothers came up with the idea of interlocking pieces. Each one cut by hand, mostly by women. Parker Brothers claimed that it hired women because they already knew how to sew. A treadle sewing machine looked very much like a treadle scroll saw. So women were easy to train and they could pay women a lot less. I'm not making any political statement here. It was during the Great Depression that the popularity of jigsaw puzzles exploded. Thirty million households in the United States were absorbing ten million jigsaw puzzles every week. Puzzles were entertainment and employment. There were so many people out of work, you could buy a scroll saw or a jig saw for twenty dollars. Set it up in your kitchen or basement, start making jigsaw puzzles and sell them to neighbors or rent them out through the local drugstore. I kind of remember that in Smithville, that the drugstore did that when I was a little kid. In terms of popularity of categories of puzzles, we go through spells. Sometimes it's butterflies or frogs or lighthouses, dogs or birds. Recently, the bulk of puzzles sold by Peastime Puzzles in Northwood, New Hampshire, which has been in the puzzle business for twenty-five years. Has been personalized puzzles. School districts have been putting puzzles together for years. Because there are so many different pieces that have to interlock and fit together to make a district run smoothly. There's a piece for facilities, transportation, adult education, online learning, elementary education, secondary education. Counseling, media centers, child nutrition, administration, teachers, support staff, finances, athletics. Dual language, visual arts, performing arts, science, math, language, ESL, curriculum, grants, held, PE. Assessments, public information, technology and more. As I was thinking about this, I realized that serving on a school board is also like a puzzle. Because we are made up of nine individual puzzle pieces, each with unique ideas, opinions, skills and talents. It is our responsibility and duty to interlock effectively with the other pieces. In order to successfully complete the district puzzle. While I have served as president, it has been amazing to see each of you skillfully use your time and talents. To contribute to the construction of our district puzzle. I just want to say thanks and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and better new year. And just in case you get quarantined before we're all vaccinated, here is your own school board puzzle. So I just want to show you so you don't have to hold it here. This is your puzzle. So enjoy it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, okay, Superintendent.
Uh, boy, I was really wondering there for a minute. When you go from games to puzzles, you're not going the right way in my life. But that puzzle's gonna be fun. And thanks for the tying it into the work that we do. That was really, I, I love that. I have found this, this short letter from Jefferson County Superintendent, uh, Bodie Shea Gibson. Uh, Dear Jefferson County School Community, for generations, families. Have greeted the first snow of the year with joy. It is a time of. Of renewed wonder at all the beautiful things that each season holds. A reminder of how fleeting a childhood can be. An opportunity to make some memories with your family that you hold on. Hold on to for life. For all these reasons and many more. Jefferson County Schools will be completely closed for tomorrow, December sixteenth. In honor of the first snow day of the year. Closed for students, closed for virtual, closed for staff. It has been a year of seemingly endless loss and, and the stress of trying to make up for that loss. For just a moment, we can all let go of our worry of making up for the many things we've missed by making sure. This is one thing that the kids won't lose this year. So please enjoy a day of sweating and hot chocolate and cozy fires. Take pictures of your kids. In snow hats. They will outgrow by next year and read books that you have wanted to, to lose yourself in but haven't had time. We will return to the serious and urgent business of growing up on Thursday, but for tomorrow, go build a snowman. I'll tell you, I don't know the guy, but I know that if I was within distance, I would drive to just spend some time with him. Uh, he's my kind of man. And, uh. There was on a, on a website, Facebook post, my daughter had posted this letter. And, uh, some of the people who are, are her friends are in our school district. And they, there was a post that said, it would sure be nice if. The twenty-first and twenty-second could be handled this way. Now, let me just tell you something. It's a lot earlier to write this, it's a lot easier to write this kind of letter. If you're in a state that says a snow day is an act of God and you don't have to make it up. Yeah, I think West Virginia is probably that way. In a state like Utah. In a state like Utah, where you have to make them up, it's a little more difficult. But that's a wonderfully written letter, and he's got to be a wonderful guy to work for. So just share that with you.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? Or anything you want to say? Okay.
Merry Christmas. We're almost.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thanks to our district folks. You've had a pretty rough year and have stayed on top of everything so well.
Twenty twenty-one is going to be better.
But we do appreciate all that you have done, and thank you to the board for all that you do to keep things rolling on our,
Thank you.
With our piece of the puzzle as well. So there's nothing else, and this meeting is adjourned.